Good evening and welcome to the East Hampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, January 8th, 2020. Before we start our regular agenda item, we have some things that we need to finish up from last week. That is the swearing in for Counselor Derby and Counselor Rothschild, so I will turn it over to the clerk.
Okay, so we're going to begin with our new counselor, Lindsey Rothschild.
Stand up. You walk to the front.
Yeah, I have to stand in the middle. Raise your hand and repeat after me. I state your name, do solemnly swear.
Hi, Lindsey Rothschild, do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform all duties.
Discharge and perform all duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As city councilor at large.
As city councilor at large.
According to the best of my knowledge and abilities.
According to the best of my knowledge and abilities.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution of the United States of America.
Of the Constitution of the United States of America.
The laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
The laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the city of East Hampton.
And the city of East Hampton.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I'm not going to shake your hands, I'm a cold.
I think I'll move over.
All right, you've done this before.
I've done this before.
Yes, a few times.
I state your name, do solemnly swear.
I say, Salem Derby, do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform all duties.
Discharge and perform all duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As precinct four district city councilor.
As precinct four district city councilor.
According to the best of my knowledge and abilities.
According to the best of my knowledge and abilities.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution of the United States of America.
Of the Constitution of the United States of America.
The laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
The laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the city of East Hampton.
And the city of East Hampton.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
I should be able to do that on my own.
Thanks. Peg Coniff.
Here.
Salem Derby.
Present.
Omar Gomez.
Here.
JP Kuzinski.
Here.
Bill Lynch.
Here.
Tom Peak.
Here.
Dan Rist.
Here.
Lindsey Rothschild.
Here.
And Owen Zerret.
And we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, and justice, and every one.
So, we're going to do a couple of different things than we do in a typical meeting, and because this is the first one of the new term, we have a couple of extra steps we're going to do. First one being, I'm going to announce the new committee assignments, and then we will take a short break for those committees to perform a reorganization and name their chairs and clerks. So, I'm just going to read through these. The ordinance committee is now Counselor Derby, Counselor Zerret, and Counselor Peak. Public safety, Counselor Gomez, Counselor Derby, Counselor Rothschild. Appointments, Counselor Gomez, Counselor Lynch, Counselor Kuzinski. Rules and government relations, Counselor Peak, Counselor Rist, Counselor Coniff. Finance, Counselor Rist, Counselor Coniff, and Counselor Lynch. And property, Counselors Zerret, Counselor Kuzinski, and Counselor Rothschild. So now, in order for those committees to name their chairs and their clerks, we will take a short recess for that process to take place, so I will have a motion for a short recess.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're going to take a short break.
Are we already set up?
Appointment is all set.
Yeah, appointment's all set. Bill?
So, thank you. Okay, the next on the agenda is the fun part, where the mayor is going to do recognition. Oh, I'm sorry, hold it. My first of many mistakes. We're going to do the city council resolution pertaining to discrimination and intolerance as we, and intolerance as we always do, first meeting of the new term, and I'll ask Dan Rist to take care of that.
We have a resolution, the East Hampton City Council resolution pertaining to discrimination and intolerance, whereas one of the fundamental core values of the city of East Hampton is to treat all persons with respect and dignity, and whereas the city of East Hampton values all of its citizens and recognizes that many ethnicities have contributed to the strength of character of the citizens of East Hampton, and whereas the city of East Hampton recognizes the strength in the diversity and inclusiveness of its citizenry, and now therefore be it resolved, hereby resolved, that the city of East Hampton and its representatives shall not condone or tolerate any form of discrimination on the basis of race, color, religious creed, age, familiar status, national origin, immigration status, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity or expression, physical or mental disability, or veteran status, dated this eighth day of January 2020, to be signed by all members of the city council.
I'll sign this one.
Now, do we want to make a motion to accept that?
So moved.
Taken.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks, Dan. Now, the mayor will do a recognition of employee milestones, those employees who have reached milestone anniversaries in the prior year 2019. Good evening.
Good evening.
I have to organize my things here. So what I'd like to do is, I delightfully have a long list of employees who have worked for the city ten and plus, ten-plus years. I'd like to just read their names, ask them to come up as I read their name, and then we just have a short paragraph that kind of summarizes, not their whole career and achievements, but gives you a good idea. So the first one is Dave Safran, and Dave began, is he here?
Dave Safran.
Dave began his 35-year employment with the city of East Hampton in 1984 as a provisional firefighter. He became a firefighter EMT on June 5th, 1985. Dave is a senior member of the department and wears badge number one. And in recognition of your service, I'd like to present you with a 35-year pin of service from the city of East Hampton, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next employee to be recognized is Chris Patino. Chris joined the East Hampton Police Department as an auxiliary police officer and special police officer before becoming provisional police officer, and became a full-time patrolman in May of 1988. Chris became a provisional sergeant in 1994, permanent sergeant in 1994, and staff sergeant in 2005, where he stayed until he was promoted to captain in November of 2017. During his career, Chris has received the East Hampton Police Department's Medal of Valor twice, lifesaving award once, the Massachusetts State Police and Superintendent's Accommodation, as well as numerous meritorious conduct and merit awards and letters of commendation. Thank you for your service, and here's a 35-year. Our next employee is, whoop, hold on a second, George Malaga. George, there we go. Hold up. There it is. George joined East Hampton Park and Recreation Department in December of 1984 as a working park foreman. George also serves as the East Hampton tree warden. I would say additionally, George makes everything really go in park and recs, especially our beautiful parks, and makes his department head, John Mason, look really fantastic. George, thank you so much. Our next employee is William Melkey, 30 years of service. Bill began his career as an auxiliary police officer and detention attendant in 1989. In 1994, Bill was appointed as a permanent, full-time police officer. Bill has also served as a DARE program officer, detective, and sergeant. Bill has received a SAVE Award from the Western Mass Emergency Medical Service Committee, as well as several accommodations from the department and city council. Thank you so much for your service. Our next employee is Rick Rogalowski. Is Rick here? No. I'll just, we'll put the pin aside and want to just let people know, he joined the East Hampton Police Department as special police officer in June of 1994, provisional and then full-time police officer in 1995. He also serves as our school resource officer and is very active in youth sports, and I will get him his 25-year pin in the near future. Our next employee to be recognized is Brian Ross. Brian. Brian also joined the East Hampton Police Department in June of 1994 as a special police officer and became a full-time officer in 1995. In 2005, he was promoted to the rank of sergeant. Sergeant Ross has received a SAVE Award, as well as multiple accommodations, and is, and thanks of your service, he was a 25-year. Our next employee is Chief David Mader, of 25 years of service. Chief joined the East Hampton Fire Department in 1994 as a firefighter EMT. He was promoted to captain in 2005 and deputy chief in 2006. In January 2009, he began, came fire chief. It's also worth noting that Chief Mader has taken a leadership role with the Chiefs Association in the state and on the national level, and is well-known for his emergency management, planning, and skills. Our next employee is Greg Gagnon. Greg began his career as a firefighter with the city of East Hampton in 1994. Greg has received a prehospital SAVE Award. Greg was one of the first EMT intermediates hired. Greg is also very active with the local union and a good partner to the city as far as best practices and professional development. Next is Mary Ann Giza, 25 years of service. In 1994, Mary Ann began her career as assistant city clerk, and has served as acting clerk for the city council in Barbara Bombard's absence. She effectively also supports the election department as needed. Thank you very much. Patrick Eli. Pat began as a call firefighter in 1994 and was appointed full-time in 1995. Pat has received a SAVE Award. Pat was one of the first paramedics hired by the city. Thank you for your 25 years. Cindy Perry, over the last 25 years, has served as an administrative assistant for the police department since 1994. During her career, and this is a feat, Cindy has worked with four police chiefs. I also, Cindy is a very good partner, certainly to my office, the treasurers and auditors, keeping grants straight, as well as the paperwork, that really helps the police department run, and knowing her work with Chief Alberti, I am sure you also served the other three chiefs with pride and also professionalism. Next is Carl Williams, 15 years of service. Carl was hired in August of 2004 as the wastewater treatment plant supervisor. If you have not gone down to wastewater, I encourage you to do so. It is a major function of our city. It's not glamorous or sexy, but without it, we would be in deep. And also, you'll hear a lot more about that as we go forward with the public here, I'm going to plug it, with our integrated stormwater and waste management plan. The back of the plant, I will say in closing, is fascinating, and it's where Carl and elves of wastewater create parts for our aging equipment in a very efficient manner. Thank you, Carl. Okay. I'll just mention, Dan LaCoco is not able to come to this meeting, but want to congratulate him for 10 years of service, and we'll get his pin to him. He has been with the Park and Recreation Department since May of 2004. Also unable to attend is Assessor Lori Reynolds, 15 years of service. Lori started in the assessor's office in 2004. In 2007, she transferred to the DPW office, where she remained until her transfer to the collector's office. And I will also get her pin to her tomorrow. And that concludes the recognitions.
Thank you.
Before you all leave, and I know you're dying to leave, I do want to just extend my thanks to all of the years of service that you have provided to the city, to the people of the city, in keeping them safe, in keeping the city running. You've been through chiefs of police, and mayors, and city council members, and school committee members, and superintendents, and as a person myself, who will be retiring 50 days, is that what I told you? 50 days after 30 years, I am certain I'm not getting a pin from anyone, and so I thank you, I have the utmost respect for all of you, and I thank you for your service. Congratulations. Okay, and if you need to leave, those of you who have been recognized, I totally get it. Give him a second. All right, I will take a motion to approve the minutes of December 18th.
So moved.
Taken.
All in favor?
Aye.
One abstention, and passes. At this time, we will have public speak, which is, anyone from the public may come to the podium and speak to the council on any issue that is not part of the agenda, and I just ask that you come up and state your name and your address before you speak. Seeing none, we will continue to move on. Communications from elected officials, boards, and committees. Counselor Zerret. I seriously, I need to come on.
Just a quick congratulations to President Coniff and Vice President Rist. Looking forward to your leadership, and I apologize, Counselor Rothschild, that I was not here for your swearing in, but welcome to the city council, and whatever way that I can be supportive of your term, let me know. And Winterfest is a month away, and they're looking for volunteers, so please consider volunteering for a great winter event, and I think that's it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Moving on to the correspondence and announcements from president and vice president, so I'm going to take this opportunity, we have not had a new president in 10 years, so I don't know if we've done this before, but I'm going to do it now. So, I just have a couple of things that I want to remind us all of, and then also, it'll be news to Counselor Rothschild, so I want to make sure that we're all on the level playing field, and we all remember kind of some of these things that some of us take for granted because we've known for so long. So, first, I do want to thank you all for making me your president for the next two years. I am honored and very appreciative, and I hope that I don't take this for granted as we go through the next two years. I also am extremely grateful to Counselor Rist for sitting alongside me as the vice president. He has an immeasurable, a measurable amount of information and learning that he has, and he will impart hopefully to me as we go along, so I'm really grateful that he is sitting next to me. So, thank you, Dan.
You're welcome.
And with that, I have a little bit of housekeeping, only two pages, so we shouldn't be here long. Little bit of housekeeping, again, it's nothing that we don't already know, but I just wanted Counselor Rothschild to hear it as we are all hearing. So, first thing, we all know, raise your hand and wait to be recognized before speaking, and then please be patient as I work through the mechanics of this role, and I am likely to do a few missteps, but I think we'll all get through it. Be respectful of each other, and to those who walk up to the podium to speak to us, coming before the council, totally okay if we disagree, but we should do it respectfully. Also remember, we're being recorded, so speak up. Now, these are just some other things I was thinking about, and I wanted to talk about them tonight. It may either endear me to you or not. So one of the things is, when requesting a change to an agenda that has already been sent out, please send the request to me, and then assuming I approve it, I will send it to the clerk and I will copy you, and that's how you will know it's approved. If there's an item on our agenda or active in a committee, and there's a quorum of counselors, just remember, open meeting laws restrict us from discussing that either in person or in email. And no, I have sent you guys a lot of emails over the last couple of days, so that may continue, because I'm a sharer of information, and so if I find something that I think you might find interesting, I will send it to you, so I apologize in advance, and hopefully that you will share as well. The other thing that we've seen tonight, everybody, all these outstanding employees who have been recognized tonight, their jobs are hard, and the work is often deadline-driven and complex, and so, and for some, the very lives of the people of the city depend on them. So, I have a request. So when we have issues that come up, or questions about something you've heard, or thought you heard, and you're not, you have a question, I would prefer that you come to me, there is a strong chance I know what that issue is and the answer to that question, and if I don't, you can certainly go to whoever can get you that answer, but trying to limit nine people going to specific people to ask the same question, that there may be an answer sitting right here. So, start with me, and then if I don't know, then you can have at it. Let's see. And there is never a time when you can't go to the department heads or the mayor, so that's, I don't want that to be the message, because that's not the message. And, let's see, oh, I thought somebody had a question. Also, please use the committee meetings to ask the bulk of the questions of the department heads. I think we'll try and get them to come to a lot of the meetings, so that we can all collectively hear the answers to the questions we probably all have, and I think it would be more expeditious and efficient if we asked all those questions in committee, that's where the work needs to be, and that's where the questions and answer period should be, and we should all hear it at the same time. I think that's it. Any questions? Concerns? Criticism? Well, no, let's not talk about that.
Thank you.
All right. The PIRAC appropriation, do you just want to mention that, Dan?
We have always been, PIRAC is the Massachusetts Public Employee Retirement Administration Commission. They direct the city as to what amount of funds need to be appropriated in the upcoming 2021 budget. The mayor, I'm sure, is very happy to see this figure every year. The figure of $3,369,000 is required of our city to fund its liability toward the retirement account. I don't know how much of that funds the unfunded liability, but that's an area that after, what, about 25 years, I still don't understand, so I can't answer that question, but I think the treasurer or the auditor can help you if you want to know what that figure is. We are required to pay this every year, and this is just an announcement that's been sent to the city, and the mayor's providing it to us for information.
Thanks, Dan. And now mayor communications, Mayor LaChacell.
So, just quickly on the understanding of the retirement count and the other post-employment benefits in the budget book, it actually walks through how those are both funded and our obligations. Our OPEV account, last year, you established a specific stabilization account for those other post-employment benefits, which is a best practice of the state, as well as the government finance officials of America. So, you'll hear more about it as we go through the budget process, but if folks want to start there in the budget book, it's listed out as a separate point, as well as the auditor and treasurer are well-versed in that. So I'd like to, one, announce the acceptance of a gift of $10,000 to establish a donation account for the recreational trails in the city from Eric Burson, that we opened that account, and it's good to go, and further discussion and use of that will come forward, but I wanted to recognize that generosity, as there's a deep interest in all sorts of recreation in the city, and mountain biking is a particular passion of Mr. Burson's, so I've wanted to. I also included in the packet for information, the 20th Annual National Autobahn Christmas Bird Count, given again, the, first of all, it's very easy to run, read. It's amazing what wildlife find homes in East Hampton, and I think it underscores our connection to one of the National Trails Network, as well as Arcadia's national and state-level designation of our city, being a part of a national wildlife corridor that actually starts around Arcadia in East Hampton, and then swoops up the view shed of Mount Tom, including the park that we're establishing right off of East Street. This is a point in time, and they do it every single year, so maybe some of your favorite birds or wildlife are not on the list, be assured, they might exist in East Hampton. But really, I think just an interesting thing, we all work so hard to preserve land, pay attention to open space, and be environmentally conscious, and this is just a great outcome, and something to know, that our work together produces a document like this. That said, I have a few other items. Okay, just on the personnel, I'm sorry, on the, my agenda is just freaking out at me here. I'm reading everything. I don't know. So, on employee recognition, the ceremony that we did today here is a part of a larger morale and employee appreciation initiative that the Personnel Department started. morale and employee appreciation initiative that the Personnel Department started really late fall, and there were different events and activities for city employees in the building. What you saw today and the recognition with a formal pin was just one part of that. And Personnel, really, the department, really deserves some credit for that. I got to do the forward part of it, but it was Jane Sakowitz and Emily Russo in our Personnel Department that drove it, and there's a lot of employee participation in that. That said, another item for, from the Personnel Department, the Personnel Director, Jane Sakowitz, has resigned and has left the employ of the city. The position has been posted now for the last week. The posting, the first posting closes on the 12th, and we'll review applicants and interests then, and then make next steps, decisions about if we have to repost or what the pool of candidates look like. In the meantime, Personnel contact is Emily Russo, and she's, you know, taking each inquiry as what's a part of her already established duties, and then connecting folks to other department heads who are taking the lead of Personnel Management functions. One in particular is our insurance contact with MIAA, in particular around workers' comp and employment claims. Jen Gallant, our treasurer, is going to take lead on that until Personnel Director position is felt, which I hope is in the near future. I would like to also request to remove the item on tonight's agenda, to add Coordinator to the pay plan, and give a strong reminder, we get a lot of inquiries about different infrastructure projects taking place in the city or will. One big one is Union Street Project, which started years ago as a part of the Transportation Improvement Project Program with Mass Department of Transportation. On January 13th, there will be a public hearing in these chambers to go over where we are with that project, update, pictures. Mass DOT will be here, as well as our consultant who's helping with design and members of city departments. The materials for, that will be discussed in this meeting, will be available at 6:00 PM in this room, with the actual public hearing starting at 6:30. So if people want kind of an advanced preview of the materials and not have to immediately digest as it's being presented, that is available starting at 6:00 PM. Questions of those who might be viewing the hearing after are encouraged to get a hold of either Joe in Department of Public Works or Jeff in Planning, as both of those departments right now are sharing the project before it goes right over to our Highway Department and Mass DOT collaboration. The last thing I would have, and I can't remember if it was in last packet, I don't think so. I need to get, we've heard back from Mass DOT around additional data and research on the South and Main Street intersection. The blinking lights are up, and their reevaluation, the good news is, one, we thought we'd have to go back to PVPC and do traffic analysis of all four parts of that intersection, two are not owned by the state but owned by the city. The data collection that the state did upon the request of this body and my office sees that a traffic light is needed. That's the good news.
Wait, is there a bud?
Hold on.
Yep. Paying for it. It looked, it could be as much as $2 million. Yeah. Well, and, I mean, not to belabor it, and I'm happy to go to public safety, or as the president directs us to committees. The utility poles, I mean, if you think about Old Colony Package Store and that, and also College Variety sidewalks are very undefined, and utility poles, because they're so old, are literally right on Route 10. So, and one utility pole in particular, I think, has every utility and public function you could possibly have on a pole in the city. So moving it is complicated and important, as well as the angles. So there are different ways to fund that. One of them would be a transportation improvement project. I would just say, when I get you the report, it'll mention that. Those monies are very competitive, and we have other things on the tip. I'm not saying it couldn't be prioritized, but it's not like a slam dunk. You file the grant, and then you wait a year or two to get it. It's super competitive throughout Western Mass, and Pioneer Valley Planning Committee Commission oversees that. So, one, and it walks through. So I will get you that, that report. My apologies for that. That said, I have nothing else to present or share.
Any questions?
Thank you. Don't know, I was going to say, thank you.
Counselor Zerrit?
Well, I can say thank you also, but I also have a question to ask.
Mark?
Mayor, how are you?
Good.
Couldn't see that for a second.
Likewise.
So, so as you're aware, the residents of East Hampton recently received their property tax bills.
They did.
And I think that, to go back, the increases that we saw from the debt exclusion were, I think broadly, what we expected and what were advertised, discussed in all the forums. But I think for a lot of residents, there were some unexpected increases to their property taxes via new assessments.
Yeah.
And I think that that whole process, I think, occurred transparently. There were multiple meetings, and everything's available to be seen. And the city actually did a very good job with putting out a press release ahead of time explaining some of these changes. And while I think that was transparent, I think for many residents, I wouldn't say for all, part of it wasn't visible. And I'm not saying that that was purposeful on the part of the city, but what this gets, what I'm getting at is that I think that some of the things I've been hearing
Yeah.
On the street, if you will, is that there's a desire, there's a missing link for communications from the city. Not everyone's on social media, or not everything's available through the paper, or people don't know where to look. And I know there may have been some discussions about, like, citywide email lists and things like that. I sent you an email today about something that North Hampton's doing, where they have this visible budget, which I think is a great idea. So this, what I am preempting is, what is the city currently doing about trying to improve dissemination of information to residents?
So most of the, actually, all of the information that led up to setting our tax rate is posted online, including the increased assessments of multiple multifamily homes, which really saw the biggest jump. The process of assessment, this was the year of the reevaluate, where the Department of Revenue really does a deep dive. The assessment process is the same every year, and the assessments are posted as soon as we get them and well before the tax rate is set. The other thing is that there were a lot of questions around why on January 1st, it's because we, in the first two quarters of a fiscal year, always tax it's a preliminary bill, and we tax it the former fiscal year's rate. And January 1st, after DOR and our assessors and auditor complete their process, we make up the difference in the tax rate. That said, the East, the North Hampton tool is actually been in existence over in North Hampton for several years. They used it with the override to kind of talk through, pull through the process. I did look at that as a tool and actually talked about it in my, in my campaign, as well as my initial speech. The costs of such a program, that particular one was built by the town of Arlington, and then those folks went into their own software program. Myself and then the treasurer at that point, we looked into it. The cost is at the very low end, $5,000. It goes up to 10 or 15 for an initial cost. On the $5,000, the information is not as flexible as what you see on the virtual budget. And the 15, the $10,000 to $15,000 spent for initial investment, of course, as a follow-up maintenance fee. My concerns, while I think it would be an excellent tool and save on hundreds of people hours and questions, it's an investment, and we have a long, we have a long list of investments to make. Additionally, our IT department, and what a lot is much smaller than other communities, and the maintenance and the uploading of those documents and making sure that it's correct. It is something that I'm, you know, we're investigating it, and I'll talk to that. But I have said to several of the counselors that I have spoken to, the next two years are certainly years where the city of East Hampton needs to figure out how to best invest with the public conversation and technology that makes up these gaps that folks are currently experiencing. And I think that also there's a second urgency to that. When you look at past needed practices of the city to combine positions and then take positions apart to get them filled, is an indication of an employment shortage that we are going to see across right now. Finance and DPW is very acute, but it's very difficult. If you know anybody who would like to be an auditor or a treasurer, we have classes that you can take at EUMass, and the Mass Municipal Association is seriously very interested in talking to anybody who'd like to pursue a career, because the shortage is statewide.
Thank you. The questions I have on that are, I appreciate that the software and whatnot have an expense to them and that nature. Do we know if there's any scenario where a pilot could be done, a pilot program, where we could do a test of the software? Or is it, is it something that you have, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. A test of the software to see if it would be feasible for our community prior to purchase?
We actually, so we have two pilots going on right now. One, and I can't remember that, I'm sorry, we have one. We, right when I first looked at it, we did a quick pilot, and it was comparative, and very, the price was very interesting. And what it ended up doing is the, the data was taken from public sources and scrubbed, but also compared to other municipalities on national definitions of towns, forms of government. Massachusetts has lots of form of municipal government, and it was hard to get apples to apples. And when it came down to it, our own departments had more up-to-date info, and when we add those modulars, it got, modules, it got very expensive. My dashboard, which I've shared the link to with this body, as well as, I mentioned, the Blueprint East Hampton Initiative, and we just got $25,000, starts to walk through that data and the budget process. But if it's affordable and if there's public support, I don't know right now, but I'll have a full kind of rollout of Blueprint East Hampton that looks at some of that. The budget document walks through the tax process, and I know it's big, but it's searchable, and it walks through the timeline and how things are started as well. We'll post the DOR and DL, Department of Revenue and Department of Local Services, YouTube videos that just walk through how every tax rate and tax levy is identified and set by the department. The algorithm is the same across the state. While we use vision software, the equations and algorithms are set by the state.
So I'm going to take advantage of the fact that I get to sit here and ask another question before I recognize anyone else. So I appreciate all that, and I spent a number of days diving into all the data that is on the Department DOR's website. It is not easy to navigate. I get that all the data's out there, and if you know what you're looking for, you can find it. So I am really an advocate for anything that would provide information in a readable format to our community on the budget, on dollars, and as you started, when you started the conversation about the number of hours that you've been receiving questions.
Yep.
That's a save right there. If you don't have to get all those questions, people don't have to do that. They can do their job. So I'm making a commentary, I'm not asking a question, I'm just basically saying, I think that software would be awesome, and I would like to have us maybe look into it in a more broad perspective, because I think communication out to the community
Yep.
Should be raised up on our priority list, on a number of areas, not just our financial budgets.
Sure. So, point well taken, not disagreeing, and I certainly won't take those points of information as a provisional approval
No, nor should you.
Of the requests I might put for such a product. I think we should definitely look into it. I forwarded the mayor's budget letter to you all and have asked all the departments to take a look at the capital, their capital improvement plans and upgrade those to what they were able to get, either through the selected funding source, or a lot of them were grants, so they're off the list. And then also had them all, expect them to present budget proposals to myself with level funding, so same amount they got. So dollars are tight, and the switch over to that, and it's certainly, you know, the other thing forthcoming, once we get direction from the Department of Revenue and local services, will also be the impact fee, and what can be done, and how the impact on the community is attached to that money and expenditure.
Sure.
I'm going to caution everyone that this is one-time money, it only lasts for five years. We don't know how much that we will end up getting for next five years, and I am very cautious to use it, to use it for reoccurring expenditures or staff. But I will, it'll be a public conversation once we get the guidelines and stuff like that.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Lynch?
Just on that, in a lot of the conversations I had with constituents that were concerned about their tax rate and everything else, and the lack of not being able to get the information, I honestly think it's the, something that would have been as easy as a Word document, which we already have. It's not a program we need to buy. Just type up a quick little letter, a one-pager, and slip it in with the bill. I'm sure we don't package the bills.
We do not.
Right. You know, I mean, that would have been a simple expense that I think we should have looked into, that would have paired with the bill, that said, here's your tax bill, this is how it broke down and everything else. I'm not, I'm, I don't think it needs to be as in-depth as all-new programming and everything else. I think it's just a simple information letter to the, to the, to the whole city. Here's the facts of what we have. And I think that kind of transparency, if that was happened, if that happened, if that, with this kind of an increase, would have resolved a lot of the stress and a lot of the concerns with everybody, just a simple explanation, two months or two quarters retro pay is also included in these, you know, and everything else, people might have been, the pill might have swallowed a little bit easier. That's just my advice, or whatever, whatever it's worth.
Taken under advisement, for sure. We, the tax bills and how they're mailed out are specific. They're twice a year. We did do a press release, the Gazette will be doing a fuller article. I would say the concern, it's a, while well-taken and spoken, renters don't get that information and won't understand why the rent is going up. Also, the, the process of information is something we're struggling with overall in the city. And it was, it was interesting to talk to the assessor and the tax collector with the Gazette reporter about the process, and all three of us identified why the sudden outrage, the increase in new growth was exactly the same as last year. The tax rate went down, which means the assessments went up. So the percent is the same. I know that doesn't, you know, minimize, it's cold comfort to say that, but
Sure.
The press release was the best that we could do. And for the communication, and I will, I'll just be singing this song until June 30th, and then start again on July 5th, it's all about the dollars. You know, it's filling the gaps, you know. Thank goodness we got the 3% local tax on cannabis, because it's covering inflation and costs and salaries and asphalt. Cold patch, hot patch now doesn't really work anymore because of climate change, and that's really kind of covering our backs right now. So I am, you know, I've said it a million times, the switch from people hours to technology has to happen. The cost of that, the transition period, is really a puzzle. One we're working on, and one you'll hear about, but I couldn't agree, agree more, and looking for grant money to fund it. That initial cost is a big nut for us.
Anything else? Counselor Zerrit?
Thank you, President Coniff. I wait till everyone else went.
I wait till everyone else went.
I appreciate.
Just one more follow-up question there. Is there any plan to reevaluate the city website and potentially redo it?
Conceptually, yes. I have, I had a request in my, in my capital improvement plan to do that. We budgeted or looked at $25,000. The school department was successful working with Ashley, our IT director, and freshening theirs for a minimal cost and certainly something, you know, we're open to. I think we just have a lot of other priorities around the website. I personally think, and there's more grant funds for our apps, is a city app, there's a lot of grant money and, you know, we're just starting to take a look at those with community compact funds that we use to redo our budget. And there's a lot of apps, almost like that virtual budget tool, there's a lot of fill-ins where you can, and it's much easier to update. But still, you know, I mean, how familiar anybody, it would be mobile-friendly, but that can't be the only communication solution. But but apps, I think, I feel more confident I could get money for an app, maybe a very full-throated app than website, but the money's in the capital improvement plan and you'll see it again this year.
Anything else? Thank you, Mayor. Now we will move to the reports of standing committees. When you give your committee report, please let me know who you have elected as chair and clerk and get the information.
I may introduce a few motions regarding the gifts.
Oh, all right.
Regarding the acceptance of the gifts pursuant to the provisions of MGL Chapter 44, Section 53A, approval is hereby given for acceptance of the following gift to the city of East Hampton, $10,000 from Fort Hill Brewery for mountain bike trail development on city-owned property off Hendrick Street.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Both abstain, motion passes.
And I'd like to request the approval for a donation account pursuant to the provisions of MGL Chapter 44, Section 53A. Approval is hereby given to establish an account to receive donations for development of recreation trails, including mountain bike trails in the city of East Hampton.
And that's in the form of a motion?
That is.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both abstain, motion passes. Thank you. Okay, now, reports of standing committees, if, as you give your report, let me know, clerk and chair and I think, Barbara, do you want those papers?
Sure.
Okay. And then let Barb know based on the piece of paper that you have. And we'll start with finance, Counselor Rist.
Thank you, Madam President. I was elected chair of the committee. The clerk will be Counselor Lynch and as per, I think it's the law, I will be the CPA representative and continue that work, which I find very rewarding. So I'd like to announce that our first meeting of our term will be at 5:30 on the 15th in Room 1. At that time, President Coniff has requested the assessor and the auditor attend the meeting to talk about the tax process. If you have questions, I think you've seen Counselor Coniff's email, that you would like them to answer because you can't attend the meeting, please send them to me and I'll make sure they get them ahead of time. It would help if they have them ahead of time. That'll be the first item on the agenda. I have also some new business, which I'll do right now. First item for new business, and I will do these in the form of a first reading. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount is $17,233 from free cash, $6,930, to highway salary from retained earnings, $10,303. Water salary, $2,695. Sewer salary, $2,695. And wastewater salary, $4,913. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, to provide funds for the recently negotiated collective bargaining DPW agreement with the East Hampton Supervisors Association, Unit B. The next item, sorry, we already did that one. I'm a little out of order, so. Request is hereby made for the approval of the following appropriation, $70,444.79 from free cash, $70,444.79, to Blue Cross Blue Shield Health Insurance Liability, requested for the following purpose, to provide for employee's share of health insurance not paid by employees in July due to an insurance holiday provided for the city. The next item is hereby made for the following appropriation, $182,000 from free cash, $182,000, to active school 32B expense, $134,000, and active city 32B expense, $48,000. Requested for the following purpose, to provide employer's share of health insurance to end the fiscal year. The next item is $2,282.81 to be transferred from free cash, to be transferred to various accounts below. There's a lot of them. Full-time, and this is from the fire department, I believe. Fire full-time regular accounts, $16,137.54. Fire overtime account, $160,000. Fire holiday pay, $448.27. Fire uniform allowance, $3,600. Fire radio, telephone, and other communication, $4,800. Fire building equipment repair and maintenance, $3,228. Repairs to vehicles, $2,500. SCBA maintenance and repair, $1,232. Fire equipment, $3,837. And in-state travel, $6,500, for a total of $202,282.81. Finally, request for the following appropriation, $44,940.60 to be transferred from free cash, to be transferred to the various accounts. EMS incentive, $17,000. Repairs to vehicle equipment, $8,000. Maintenance and service agreement, $2,240.60. Ambulance, medical, and surgical supply, $17,700. And I believe that's to deal with the appropriation for EMT incentive repairs, maintenance, and agreements. I move that all of these aforementioned items be sent to the Finance Committee for review.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I also would like to move that a public hearing be set on January 22nd, our next meeting, at 6:15 in these chambers for the following items. $248,800 for the design repair of a sewer outfall line from wastewater treatment plant to the Connecticut River. $17,233 for the negotiated contract with DPW supervisors. Seventy thou, I'm sorry, $182,000 employer's share of health insurance to end the fiscal year, and $2,282.81 for fire payroll costs, equipment, and maintenance. I move that they be set, public hearings be set for those items.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
The last two items, I would like to make a motion to set a public hearing for our first meeting in February, and I don't remember the date. $70,444.79 and $44,940.60. I move that a public hearing be set, first meeting in February for those two items.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes.
Lastly, I wanted to mention that there was a public hearing scheduled for the possible, the definite rate increase that we're all facing for sewer and water repairs. This is a document, it's many pages. It's called the Integrated Water Resources Management Plan Report. It was dud by Tighe and Bond. I will be sending all of you out a list of over 200 projects and their costs and their priority. I would suggest whenever that meeting is rescheduled, that public hearing we attend it because it will affect our residents again. This is an increase necessary. Some of the items on that are highly urgent and if they're not done, the state is going to come down hard on us. And this has to do with infrastructure that's 100 years old. The mayor mentioned to me that they found one set of pipes that was made of wood.
Oh.
So there's a lot of, unfortunately, this is a complex of serious issues and I think the mayor wants to speak to it, but I just want you to know that this is very important. There is a CD of this document. I will try to upload it on my computer and send it to everybody, but at least I will be sending to you the scans of the project lists so that if you have questions, you could ask them and whatever that public hearing is held.
Is it easier to put that on the website than to put, is that even too big for the website? I'd have to give it to Ashley. I don't know.
I will, I will send my copy to you to, if I can get this, all I have is a CD in here and I don't know what format it's in.
Is it easier to just burn the CD?
Wow.
No, give a CD, give a copy of the CD rather than.
If it's a PDF, I can send it to everybody.
Big email.
Hang on. Okay. Mayor.
The document that a Counselor Rist is speaking to is actually an executive summary. The complete report is over 900 pages. And that does not include another rate study that we had done that breaks it down to granular increases and where it should go first. So it's a little bit of an update and that, we'll hear that at, when the public hearing did. The executive summary is in PDF form and it was on the DPW's page.
Really? I asked.
I mean, when, when that first came out, we did post it, just the executive summary.
So this is this, that's this?
Yes, my understanding is. So if it's not up or something changed or maybe it it slipped down and the, we certainly can post it again. Or I'll, I'll check.
Counselor Rist?
I would just hope that that rate study, that was something I was hoping was in here that could be also disseminated to the councilors, if you could, just that, that particular part of the document. I don't need 900 pages.
And so the rate, the 900 pages was actually the storm plan, the integrated water and storm water management plan, and happened over two and a half years. And it prioritizes things, the rate study was one part of that plan at the very end. There were a couple of public hearings, so there's, there's that first rate study, then there's this one. The question on procedure I would have is that this report is generated and goes to the Board of Public Works? And I'm not sure, they have not seen it or discussed it.
Oh, really?
I mean, they've discussed parts of it, but they need to have that preparation session to get ready for a public hearing and make sure that they have all the information that they'd like. So as far as counsel and public document, I would, I would just defer to the Board of Public Works and know when that document is, is ready, if it's ready now, if it, it might have come out, quite honestly, in, in a meeting already, a Board of Public Works meeting. So I would defer to the Director.
Okay, I'll ask. Thank you.
Anything else?
That concludes. Thank you, Ms. Madam President.
Public safety, I assume it is Counselor Gomez?
Thank you, President Coniff. Yes, I'm the Chairman of Public Safety. The clerk is Counselor Rothschild. And the only thing that we have tonight is just to schedule, the meeting is going to be the 21st at 6:30, Room Number 1, and that's concluded.
Thank you.
I apologize to the council, I forgot to ask that the Finance Committee review of salaries and stipends for Charter 24A be sent to the Finance Committee for review.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And the request to amend the classification and pay plan, I move that it be removed from our agenda with prejudice.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appointments. Counselor Gomez?
The Chairman is, thank you, President Coniff. The Chairman is Counselor Lynch and the clerk is Counselor Gomez.
Counselor Lynch, do you want to, oh, do you want Counselor Lynch to give the report?
We have a conversation before about the, at the meeting that we had before this meeting. And he is wanting me to do the report because I do all the diligence for this meeting. But he's going to finish the report, so he's going to schedule the next meeting and move the new appointments. We have two, we have one reappointment and two new appointments from last time. I'm going to start with the reappointment as Thomas Malsberry for the Public Works with expiration time 12/31/22. He's been serving at the BPW since May 2019. He filled the remaining proportion of the Stan McCoy term when he stepped down. He and his wife moved to East Hampton in September 2018 and he previously lived in Northampton for 12 years. He worked consulting engineering firm as a boss in Springfield, Massachusetts, and he moved to Massachusetts in 2006. He studied bioresources engineering at Rutgers University in New Jersey, specializing in wastewater plant unit process design and operations. His career bet shifted over time from wastewater operation to environmental sampling and permitting, and now he's industrial processing and safety compliance.
Does he have a dog?
Yes, he does.
Excellent.
Mabel.
I have to apologize with you, President, because I didn't ask for anyone if they have a dog. We approved this 3 to 0 in, of the committee, but I will make a motion to accept Thomas Malsberry for the BPW with expiration time 12/31/22.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
The new appointment is Charles Connor for the Council of Agents. We vote 3 to 0 at the committee. He was a town meeting member. He been live in East Hampton his entire life. He is in real estate. His mom, she used to use the gym at the Council of Agents. He knows what the Council of Agents are doing. He been, he was part of the zoning update committee in 1999. He was part of the Hampton Housing Authority here in, in our city. He served 20 years in a Chamber of Commerce. He have a lot of knowledge in housing industry. He have a dad that is 90 years old. He live in a soldier home. He have two brothers. I don't know if he have a dog. Again, we vote 3 to 0 for this appointment. I'm going to make a motion to accept Charles Connor for the Council of Agents of expiration time 12/31/21.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And the last appointment that we have is Joseph McWhort. I hope I pronounced that correct. If not, I'm sorry. For the Building Commissioners of the, expiration time 12/31/22. We vote 3 to 0 at the committee. Before I do the report, I have to say the, the councilors at the committee, we have a question for the mayor. After I do the report, I'm asking for permission of the President to, if we can ask any question to the mayor about this appointment.
Maybe.
Yeah, that's a good time to ask.
Could you step to the podium, they have a question?
Question?
Yeah. The current, he's currently testing for the Building Commissioners exam.
Yes.
So is it okay for us to appoint somebody as a Building Commissioner if they haven't passed or qualified with the exams to be a Building Commissioner?
And if I may, and if so, how long does that appointment good for until someone passes? Is it unlimited? Is it six months, a year?
It's 18 months.
It's 18 months to be, pass the commissioner test, and he's already in line to take them. There will, he'll work with the former interim building commissioner, Carissa Lissy, who is helping us out as we conducted this, who is also a building commissioner to, to sign off. This is not an unusual form of getting a commissioner on board, but yes, he, he came, highly recommended members of the community have also come forward and said they really approved of, of this election. But the applicant clearly knows that there is a timeline of, of when these commis, the commissioner exams and title, you know, the license is conveyed to, on him, to him.
We, we had understood that it was a typical process and not unusual, but just was curious what the timeframe was.
Yeah, 18, 18 months. I mean, his, his professional development plan, like his timeline is, is much sooner than that. It was something he was pursuing even before this, he applied for this position.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to continue with the report. He have an extensive resume, the old councilors had from the last package. He is a building official in the City of Hollyok. He went to Gateway Regional High School. He attended Western Mass Precision Institute. He have extensive experience in the building trades. He have a completed state building official on building course. He have, he is currently studying for the last two commissioner exams. That's the question that we had to the mayor, and she answered to us. He have two daughters. He live in his, in Western Mass his entire life. And that's what I, everything that I have from him. I will make a motion to accept Joseph McWhort for the building commissioner for the expiration time 12/31/2022.
I'll second.
Motion is second for the appointment of the building commissioner. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain? Motion passes. Thank you.
That concludes my report. I'm going to let the chairman.
Wait, there's more.
So, before I start just going with the new agenda, I would like to make a request. Part of the application process is to provide a letter stating the reasons of qualifications or seeking appointment, also including resumes. Every once in a while, more probably than not, we, we don't get something, so I'd like to formally request that going forward, any applications that come to the council come with the resume and/or the cover letter that, that shows their interest and everything else. So, that being said, I'd like to make a motion to move three mayoral appointments to the Appointment Subcommittee. Anthony Corella for the Licensing Board, Expiration 6622. Scott Kavanaugh for the Manhan Rail Trail, 12/31/2022. And Kenneth Iveckia, Affordable Fair and Housing, 12/31/2022.
Second.
Motion is second to move three appointments to the Appointment Subcommittee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain? Motion passes.
This concludes the second portion. Oh, oh, next meeting will be, see, I'm getting used to it, right? December, not December.
No, sorry.
You screwed me up.
Yeah.
January 22nd at 5:30 PM in Conference Room B.
Thank you.
This concludes. What's that?
A.
Conference Room A.
Ordinance, Counselor Derby had to leave early. Could I request Counselor Pete or Counselor Zaret to give the report?
I've never sat on as an ordinance, Counselor.
So, probably not you.
Counselor Zaret.
Thank you. I'm happy to visit and honor and, sorry to see you go, Counselor Coniff, but welcome, Counselor Pete. And I'm assuming Counselor Derby is the chair? Okay, great. So, Counselor Derby will be chairing, and I will be clerking. We, active agenda items that we're actively discussing are the engine brake proposal, ordinance proposal that Counselor Quinzi had submitted. That's still undergoing discussion. We had a couple of residents come from Florence Road to give us some of their input at the last meeting, and we're still delivering that. Additionally, we came to some conclusions about the, amended, recommended amendments to open consumption of alcohol and cannabis. Right now, we're looking to hopefully wrap up the open consumption, open container alcohol, and we're waiting for some more state-level issues on the open container cannabis, so we'll be discussing that at the next meeting. Both the commercial project cycle and continued review of adult-use cannabis, established some topics are still active agenda items, but just not being discussed on the forefront as these other two. It looks like all of these are still have plenty of time. We don't need to extend that. And we will need to set a meeting, so we will let you know when that's going to be. We'll consult with, or I'm sorry, the chair will consult with us.
I thought Salem said.
Oh, did he set one?
I thought he did.
The 21st at 5:30.
Oh, okay. Our next meeting is the 21st at 5:30. What, what room?
Probably one, but I'm not sure.
Okay. Yes, this concludes.
Okay. Moving on to property, Counselor Quinzi?
On property, there were two agenda items that will be.
Who's your, who's who?
At the meeting, we unanimously elected Counselor Zaret Chair of the Property Committee and Counselor Rothschild Clerk.
Okay.
There were two agenda items that will be continuing, the inventory of city-owned property, although we've discussed the vehicles and the property and identified them, I think we're going to be doing some work on prioritizing certain properties and how they might best be used within the city. And also with regard to the dog park, that will continue, so we look forward to that. We have not established a time for the next meeting.
Okay. All set? Thank you. Rules and government relations, Counselor Pete?
Thank you, Madam President. I was re-elected to chair. President Coniff was nice enough to vouch for your clerk, so we have nothing on our agenda right now, but once we do, we'll see to it.
Let us know. All right.
This concludes.
Thank you. There is one additional item that I wanted to bring up, and that is around the Legislative Act around ranked choice voting and establishing a committee to set the ordinance around how ranked choice voting is going to work in the city. So, a committee needs to be formed for that, and so I'm going to do a reading of the Legislative Act, and then we will have a conversation from that point on. So, the, the Legislative Act is S. 2229, Implementation of Rank Choice Voting, Section 5. To implement ranked choice voting, the President of the City Council of the City of East Hampton shall appoint an ad hoc committee to draft a proposed ordinance establishing the ballot format and the procedural rules for casting and counting ranked choice voting votes. The committee shall be, also be tasked with establishing an implementation budget. The act, the ad hoc committee shall consist of the city clerk or the city clerk's designee, one member of the Board of Registers of Voters, two members of the city council, and three registered voters of the city. The ad hoc, I'm not reading the entire thing. The ad hoc committee shall present its proposed ordinance to the city council for its review and adoption, subject to amendment by the city council and approval by the mayor pursuant to the procedural requirements for ordinances under the charter of the City of East Hampton. So, we are hereby announcing that we will be establishing an ad hoc committee for ranked choice voting with those appointed members. Anyone from the community who is interested, please send an email to me. My email address is on the website. Also, any city councilor members who would be interested, please send me an email with that interest as well, and we can, in the ensuing meetings, broadcast who those, the final committee is for. Counselor Rothschild?
Do you have any guidance for voters in the community who want to be on the committee? What they should put in their email to you?
Just their interest, why they're interested, what part of this committee is, or the process around ranked choice voting is of interest to them. I don't know, I will also defer to Counselor Pete. Do you, having such a broad interest in this, do you have any specific things you think would be helpful for us to know?
I'm not sure that I, I do. I mean, anyone who has any sort of background in anything that has to do with elections would obviously be great. Anyone who doesn't have background, sort of a technical background could potentially be helpful, or just a strong interest in democracy.
Fair enough. Okay, wonderful. Thank you very much. Is there anything else that we need to address today? Counselor Rist?
Move we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I'd like to invite anyone.